I sent that to y'all.
Mr. Clerk, if you please, call a roll.
Mayor Van Johnson.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem and District Five Alderwoman, Dr. Estella Edward Shabazz.
Present.
Chairman and District Four Alderman, Nick Palumbo.
Present.
Vice Chair and District Three Alderwoman, Linda Wilder Bryan.
Present, let's go.
Post One Alderwoman, Carolyn H. Bell.
She's here.
Post Two Alderwoman, Alicia Miller Blakely.
Present.
District One Alderwoman, Bernetta B. Lanier.
Present.
District Two Alderman, Dietrich Leggett.
Here.
And District Six Alderman, Curtis Purtee.
Welcome back, Mr. Massey, I'm here.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, you do have a quorum.
Thank you. All rise. I call this meeting of the Savannah City Council to order. Today is May the 22nd, 2025, the time is 2:12 PM. Please excuse our little lateness, we ran a little over. But I call this meeting to order. Savannah will be a safe, environmentally healthy, and economically thriving community for all, and for us all means all. Alderman Dietrich Leggett will introduce our invicator for today.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm here to, and I'm elated to, introduce you to Pastor James King Senior. His scripture that he lives by is Proverbs 3, 5, and 6, says, "It's trust in the Lord with all thy heart, and lean not to your own understanding; in all thy ways submit to him, and he will direct that path." The motto that he also go with is, "Don't let your past dictate your future." Mr. King is the newly-called pastor at the Mount Herman Baptist Church located in 911 Atlantic Street. I know that's kind of pretty, it's gotta be 911, but with that, if you are in spiritual emergency, 911, go to Mount Herman.
Good call.
Yeah, that's a good one, it's not a joke in your town.
It is on Atlantic Street in our prestigious east side of Savannah. Pastor King was born and raised in Savannah, Georgia. He was educated in the school system of Chatham County. Pastor King is married to the wonderful First Lady Darrell King, and currently employed by the local 1414 ILA. Pastor King has two sons. One is a graduate of Afro-Eliot Beach High School, and his other son is a student at West Chatham Middle School. He uses his personal life to show youth how to rise against adversity, obstacles, and challenges to become what God has destined for them to be. I introduce to all our pastor.
Amen. To the mayor, to the council, it's a pleasure to be here, to do God's will. Amen?
Amen.
As I look to thee here as for which cometh my help, that all my help come from the Lord. Eterna God our Father, Lord, we come to tell you thank you. Father, ask you right now, Lord, you look on the mayor, heavenly Father, and everyone that sits up unto him, dear master, that we all come in one accord. And Father, I ask you right now, in the name of Jesus, Lord, look on our city. Dear master, Lord, we need your angels to dispatch right now in Savannah, Georgia. That, Lord, that all these crimes that's taking place, dear master, we ask you right now, Father God, right now to do it in the name of Jesus. And Father, I come to tell you thank you for the opportunity, heavenly Father, to spread your word, dear master, that you said in your word, "Let not our heart be troubled," Lord, that we believe in you, dear master, for all things, and everything that you will in our life. For all the blessed affairs in your Son Jesus' name, let every heart and mind say amen.
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 Amen. Amen.
Let us honor our country.
Our country's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor, thank you so much. A pleasure and welcome.
Mr. Mayor.
In your new role, yes.
You know that's the gumbo man, right?
Huh?
You know that's the gumbo man.
Yeah, I didn't know that's the gumbo man.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor.
If he's the gumbo man, why didn't he bring any gumbo? All right, all right. You said nothing but a word, sir. I'll come over to nine-one-one to get the gumbo. Thank you so much.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor.
Good afternoon.
Are you ready, sir?
Yes.
All right. For our first item on the agenda, I'd like to make a motion.
One moment.
Yes, sir.
I want to add one item. This would be item, we'll call the item number forty-eight, it'll be a settlement from the city attorney's office.
Yes, sir, with that adjustment, and adding item number forty-eight, I would like to make a motion for the adoption of the regular meeting agenda for May twenty-two, two thousand twenty-five.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded that we adopt the regular meeting agenda with the addition of item number forty-eight under settlements. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for items number two and three.
Let's break those up. Item number two, approval of the minutes of the work session and city manager's briefing held on May the eighth, two thousand twenty-five, at eleven A.M., Alderwoman Blakely.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the record, I need to inform you all that after the vote was taken for B. Nicole to receive their alcohol license, I was informed that they were not in agreeance with dropping their lawsuit against the city of Savannah. They were not privy to that information, so I want this to be, for the record, that I was told this for that particular item on the agenda for May the eighth. Thank you.
I think we're talking about the workshop right now, that that's number two, but I think she's referring to.
I'm doing, I'm sorry. Oh, thank you, thank you, yes, we're talking about item number three, thank you.
I'll make a motion.
One second. So, as item number three, and so she's relating information, I guess it's after the fact, obviously, our city attorney relayed what their authorized legal representative informed him, so he was acting on his behalf, but we'll make sure that.
Correct. And I did already speak to the city attorney about it.
Okay, so have y'all work that out, so. So, that's approval of the minutes of regular meeting held on May the eighth at two o'clock P. M. Is there a motion?
Second, sir. I make that motion.
Move for approval. Second. Motion, would you second?
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, we approved the minutes for the regular meeting held on May the eighth. With any adjustments from Alderwoman Blakely, all in favor?
Thank you, Mayor Johnson.
Aye. Opposed?
Opposed. Well, I'm going to add my.
Passes eight to one.
To number three.
Right.
And, and the same notation you're making regarding the, the information and the minutes from, I'm also abstaining or whatever the procedure is for that number.
You're voting against it?
Yes.
Okay, so, so let the record show this, eight to one. Alderwoman Lanier voted against the approval of the minutes with Alderwoman Blakely's explanation, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number two, approval of the minutes for the work session, city manager's briefing held on May the eighth at eleven A.M.
Make that motion, sir.
Second.
And properly moved and seconded, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Want to add an item that today the city council held an executive session dealing with issues of personnel and litigation. Ask for a motion and I'd be authorized to sign off affidavit indicating that our discussion was limited to those items and no votes were taken.
So move, sir.
Second.
Second, properly moved and seconded, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number four, under organizational items, I want to table that, and the council understands why. We'll put that on to the next agenda. Don't believe it requires any action. Mr. Clerk? Thank you. Do want to congratulate Mr. Clerk, Mark Massey, fresh, well, I'm doing it again, because I can do that. Who's now officially the council three, Region Three. A representative for the International Institute of Municipal Clerks, fresh off a plane and looking like he's had a full night's sleep, so congratulations to him. For purpose of expediency, and I see our friend here from the airport, let's just move to airport items, items number thirty-one through thirty-eight.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for the approval of the airport items, items number thirty-one through thirty-eight.
Second.
Probably moved and seconded that we approve item number thirty-one, approval of the commission's agreement share for City Works License Renewal with Aztec Systems LLC in the amount of fifty-seven thousand four hundred dollars. Item number thirty-two, approval to reimburse Enterprise Leasing Company Southeast LLC for additional security enhancements in the amount of one hundred eighty-four thousand three hundred seventy-eight dollars. Item number thirty-three, approval to purchase two QX torque systems from Allen Enterprises in the amount of eighty-two thousand eight hundred sixty-five dollars. Item number thirty-four, approval to procure fuel storage, tank interior cleaning, and coating services from Markle's Precision Company in the amount of two hundred eighty-four thousand dollars. Item number thirty-five, approval of change order number four with Collins Construction for the fuel storage facility expansion project in the amount not to exceed four hundred twenty thousand two hundred sixty-five dollars. Item number thirty-six, approval to execute a contract with Shamrock Concrete Construction Incorporated for construction services for the demo air cargo apron phase one B and road project in the amount of three million three hundred ninety-two thousand four hundred dollars. Item number thirty-seven, approval of an agreement with P.G.A.L. Incorporated for Design Services for the new parking garage expansion project in the amount of two million two hundred five thousand one hundred dollars. And item number thirty-eight, approval to execute task work order number seven with Mead and Hunt for the Airways Avenue Intersections Alternative Analysis in the amount of fifty-four thousand dollars. It's been properly moved and seconded, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We're also doing extensive road work out there with the construction of the new roadway, so we want you to avoid the area at night. It's at night, right?
Yes, sir.
What, what time, what time, and how long?
It is from six o'clock to four.
From six P. M. to four, four, four A.M., avoid Airways Road to get to the airport or get from the airport, because it'll be closed.
Gulf Street.
Gulf Street, I'm sorry, Gulf Street Road. All right, thank you very much. Under alcohol license hearings from items number five through eleven, does anyone want to pull any of these off?
Five and six, Mr. Mayor, have requested to come at June twenty-sixth and June twelfth.
Okay. Let's take item number five first, which is approval of a Class C beer and wine by the drink alcohol license with Sunday sales to Andrea Canela for Sweet Patricia's at seventeen twenty-two Havisham Street, Alderman Leggett.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, I ask that we extend.
Continue?
Well, excuse me, continue for till June twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five. That's the next council meeting, sir.
Second.
No, it's not.
No. Two council meetings.
Okay, does it seconded?
Yeah, it did, I said.
Probably moved to seconded, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Date certain is June the twenty-sixth. Item number six, is approval of a Class E beer and wine by the package alcohol license to Vinay Patel for CBD plus.
Yes, sir.
This is better than the regular CBD, this is CBD plus. I got to go by there. Eight oh-two Montgomery Street, the convenience store between West Bolton and West Gwinnett Streets in Allamatic District Two plus. Alderman Leggett.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, I ask that we continue this to June twelfth, twenty twenty-five, not only on behalf of the community, but also by the applicant.
There's second.
Second.
All right, CBD plus. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Date certain is June the twelfth. The remainder is seven, items number seven through eleven, any pullouts? None being said, we will open up the public hearing for items number seven through eleven. Item number seven is approval of a Class C liquor beer and wine by the drink alcohol license with Sunday sales to Ryan Diggins for the Municipal Grand Hotel at one thirty-two East Broughton Street. Item number eight is approval of a Class C liquor beer and wine by the drink with Sunday sales to Lone Tran for Sunday, Sunday. Restaurant located at one sixteen Whittaker Street. Item number nine is approval of a Class C liquor beer and wine by the drink alcohol license with Sunday sales to Cow Jack Chacovino for Lucia Pasta Bar, Lucia Pasta Bar, located at twenty-four twenty-five Bull Street in District Two. Item number ten is approval of a Class C liquor beer and wine by the drink alcohol license with Sunday sale to Teresa Ortega for Cantina sixty-nine located at forty-three oh-seven Ogiechi Road, Unit two oh seven, in District Five. And item number eleven, approval of a Class E beer and wine by the package alcohol license to Beneet Amin for Bay Stop. A convenience store located at ten twenty-eight West Bay Street in District One. This is a public hearing. Does anyone have anything against any of these licenses? Against any of these licenses? Going once. Against any of these licenses? Going twice? Mr. Mayor. Speak now or forever hold thy peace.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion.
Alderman, Alderman Pertie. Move to close the hearing.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number seven, Ryan Diggins for Municipal Grand, Alderman Leggett.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, I ask that we approve the Class C liquor beer wine by the drink alcohol license with Sunday sales to Ryan Diggins for the Municipal Grand.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number eight, Alderman Leggett.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, I ask that we approve the Class C liquor beer wine by the drink with Sunday sales to Lone Tran for Sunday, Sunday.
Second.
Second.
And properly moved and seconded, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number nine, Alderman Leggett.
Yes, sir, I ask that we approve the Class C liquor beer wine by the drink alcohol license with Sunday sale to Kali for Lucia Pasta Bar.
Second.
Then probably moved and seconded, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number ten, Alderwoman Shabazz.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for the approval of Class C liquor beer and wine by the drink alcohol license with Sunday sales to Teresa Ortega for Cantina sixty-nine, a restaurant at forty-three oh-seven Ogiechi Road, Unit two oh seven. The establishment is located between Mercy Way and Chatham Parkway.
Second.
Then probably moved and seconded, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number eleven, Alderwoman Lanier.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to say that this gentleman, Mr. Bennett Amin, has been working a couple of years to try to get his business moved to this area, and, and he has succeeded with that. It's within the alcohol overlay, and it's within a year. He's put a lot of work into that, and, and he's been communicating with the community. And I also want to congratulate you on working with the Community Development Corporation and the West Bay Street Business Association that's formulating. So, I would like to move for the approval of a Class E beer wine by the package alcohol license to Bennett Amin for Bay Stop, a convenience store at ten twenty-eight West Bay Street.
Second.
Then probably moved and seconded, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to zoning hearings. Petition of Harold Yellen on behalf of Farino Co. L.O. Y'all go be great, I'm sorry. Liquor license, folks. Y'all go be great. Item number twelve is petition of Harold Yellen on behalf of Farino Co. L.O.P. to amend the future land use map from residential suburban single-family to planned development for one hundred fifty-nine point seven acres at six oh-five Old River Road and Sand Hill Road to support annexation. And item number thirteen, I believe, is related on behalf of Farino L.O.P. to amend the zoning map from R.A. Residential Agriculture, Chatham County, to P.R.C., ladies. By Protected River Corridor, Chatham County, to P.D. Plan Development City for one fifty-nine point seven acres at six oh-five Old River Road and Sand Hill Road. Mr. Morrow, how are you, sir?
Excellent, how are you, Mr. Mayor?
I am well, thank you.
Pleasure to see you all today. I'm here to speak to you briefly about a couple of petitions. I'd just like to highlight items number twelve and fifteen related to the flume amendment, thirteen and seventeen related to the requested rezoning, and item number sixteen, which is the annexation, which you guys are going to hear about shortly after that. All of these are connected, but I am going to speak to you about the flume and the rezoning. On the final slide, there will be two separate petitions that are on there. The flume, again, related to twelve and fifteen, and the rezoning related to thirteen and seventeen. The first is required to permit the second, so two separate votes on those items. There are three parcels totaling about a hundred and sixty acres that are within the scope of this request off of Old River Road. You can see it on your screen there. Just to show you the future land use map and the zoning map, the future land use is largely planned development for this particular parcel. There is an area of about seven acres that you can see kind of at the bottom left-hand corner of the parcel that are the focus of the future land use request. So, to make that single-family just planned development consistent with the rest of it. You can also see that currently this is R.A., which is residential agriculture, it's a very low-density residential district, and Planned River Corridor for the current zoning. Again, just to see, here on the left-hand side, you can see the seven acres that are needed to be amended on the flume. To offer you a view of what the current zoning permits, the intent within the Chatham County zoning ordinance, the purpose of the R.A. District is to protect those rural areas within the urban expansion areas of the county for future urban development, and protect certain rural highway roadside areas against strip development. The Planned River Corridor is an overlay. It functions essentially to protect the character of this area that is extremely close to the Ogiechi River. In looking at the uses that are proposed, once this is annexed and brought into the city, there are a combination of new zone districts with which this would be aligned. Within those, there's a combination of R.M.F. two, which is residential multifamily. You can see this permits single-family detached housing all the way up to apartments, in combination with limited business and neighborhood business districts. So, these are relatively low-intensity commercial districts that are intended to be in close proximity to residential areas. With regard to Plan twenty forty consistency, this is suburban residential character area, and these are all uses that would be anticipated within this, this given area. One of the reasons why staff felt that planned development was a suitable sort of approach to this is because we see a lot of flaglot development out in this area. And so, planned development is a great approach to bring large tracts that would typically see very fragmented homesteads that might be one to two acres, five acres. And they get those, what we call flaglots, they are these long driveways that lead you back to public right-of-way of some sort. And so, if you've ever driven down the road, and you can see on the bottom kind of right-hand corner there, you see all the mailboxes out by the street in kind of these very irregular driveways. This is your flaglot style of development. It is somewhat inefficient. Sometimes there's difficulty for public safety to recognize where these locations are. Vehicles may have difficulty kind of getting back to them. And so, planned development helps us to resolve some of these issues. In looking at the adjoining jurisdictions, this property is in close proximity, obviously, already to the city of Savannah, but also to Effingham County, Bryan County, and Fort Stewart. It is within the one percent annual risk flood zone, the A.E. flood zone. And the petitioner in working with the M.P.C. has provided an updated aquatic resource delineation, and you can see that where they have determined the areas that they intend to preserve and protect with regard to wetlands that are present on the site. Again, it's significant to note that this is a special flood hazard area. These are relatively higher-risk areas as determined by FEMA's firms. And there is a base flood elevation that has been established in this instance, and there are special insurance and design regulations that are required for developments within this particular area that I'll speak to in greater detail shortly. Turning to the zoning request, you can see the conceptual plan that has been submitted in association with this request. Several entrances off of Old River Road, but essentially two use categories. P.D. R.M.F., which is a multifamily designation, essentially only residential. And closest to Old River Road, there is P.D.C., which is planned development commercial. And so, all of that commercial would be aligned along Old River Road, and it would align ideally with Four Lakes Parkway, which leads you into the Savannah-Chatham Manufacturing Center. The idea here being that there would be some kind of related activity between these two developments. So, for this hundred and sixty-three acre site, there are approximately a hundred and two upland acres.
Bless you.
Bless you. Mixed-use residential and neighborhood-scale commercial development proposed. You can see. Uh, you can see the petitioner has provided some preliminary traffic estimates with regard to, uh, trip generation. Uh, a traffic impact analysis is likely to be required for this. Um, the county also would be involved in right-of-way permitting in order to, uh, allow these, uh, new entrances onto Old River Road. Uh, the twenty-fifty stip, uh, indicates that the level of service currently for this area is a C or better. Uh, again, inter-jurisdictional coordination is going to be essential for development phasing. If you, uh, look to the top there, you can see the schedule that the petitioner has worked out largely with city engineering, uh, to kind of give you an overview of the schedule for the rollout of those utilities. And so there would be, um, a certain number of units that would be provided each year, uh, headed out to twenty-thirty-four, so. The general master plan does also include buffering, um, eight-point-seven acres of open space, uh, and the sixty-point-nine-nine acres of aquatic resources that would be preserved. That's largely, um, related to, uh, wetlands buffering, so. In looking at this petition, the Riverkeeper did raise some concerns, and staff took those very closely under consideration. Uh, they recommended that there be, uh, a wetland plan identifying areas for fill and preservation, uh, that fill and, uh, sorry, prohibiting, clearing and grading prior to, uh, issuance of any, um, wetlands-related permits, and then to prohibit any future onsite wastewater management and treatment. Uh, those are all things that staff considered. I think it's important that we understand at this juncture that, uh, the City of Savannah has recently updated its flood damage prevention ordinance, uh, which you can see some selected snippets from that here. Ultimately, in applying some of these standards to this potential development, I think there are three things we should understand. The first, that the lowest floor must be elevated at least two feet above the established base flood elevation. Uh, the second being that enclosed areas below the lowest elevated floor, uh, would only permit limited uses, uh, and ultimately, they must be designed to permit the free-flow of water, uh, through the bottom of the structure. And finally, that they have to be unfinished, uh, or flood-resistant so, uh, that, uh, they would not obviously mold or, or be susceptible to any of those environmental hazards, and ultimately, they cannot be converted for later use. Uh, finally, all essential utilities must be elevated to at least one foot above the base flood elevation. And these are all standards that are currently present, uh, within the City of Savannah's code of ordinances. Again, just showing some proximity to Fort Stewart, Fort Stewart, uh, we did receive a comment from, uh, their planning branch indicating, uh, that future residents should be, uh, warned of the potential that they will experience noise, smoke, and dust from military training exercises that are occurring, uh, near Fort Stewart. Uh, finally, with that, M.P.C. staff, uh, and the Planning Commission have both recommended approval, uh, of both actions. Uh, I will enumerate these, um, conditions that were associated with the rezoning in particular. Uh, again, the flume associated with items twelve and fifteen, um, and the rezoning requiring approval of the flume for its own approval. The M.P.C. did approve these with, uh, four conditions. First, prior to M.P.C. approval of any final master plan, the petitioner shall provide a wetland plan identifying wetlands present on the site and identifying areas proposed to be filled and preserved. Uh, the petitioner shall provide an updated general master plan reflecting the required wetland plan. I can say that we are already underway in, uh, in terms of moving in that direction, and that updated aquatic resources reflects that work. The second condition being onsite wastewater treatment shall not be permitted. The third, uh, prohibit, uh, prohibition of clearing and grading on the site until wetland-related permitting has resolved. And finally, all phases will need to demonstrate adequate public facilities, uh, to include roads, police, plans for runoff, protection of neighboring subdivisions from flooding, uh, the wetlands plan, et cetera, are in place. And so these are all items that we will work with the petitioner as they submit, uh, a final general master plan and the subsequent, uh, specific development plans for each of the pods within the tract. Uh, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, um, and if you want to make a comment regarding this, you can get a speaker card there, and we will recognize you for two minutes. Uh, to be able to do so, I see Ben Kirch, is Ben Kurtz here? Okay, um, that's the only one I have regarding this item. So if you want to, um, Ms. Kurtz, once you come up and you state your name, uh, for purposes of record, um, then the clock starts, okay?
Sure, thank you, Mayor Johnson, and thank you, Alder people. Uh, my name is Ben Kirch, I'm the legal director with O'Geechey Riverkeeper. Thank you for hearing my, hearing my concerns about this site. Um, we did, we did talk a little bit about the flooding that will happen on the site. It's within the hundred-year floodplain, and just to dispel that, it doesn't happen once every hundred years. It's a one percent risk of a pretty significant flood happening every year. So over the thirty-year lifetime of a mortgage, that's a one-in-four chance of a flood that intensity hitting the property. So it, this, this site is just not set up well for a housing development. I understand the flood damage prevention ordinance you have, but a one-in-four chance over thirty years of facing a pretty significant flood is not what I personally would want in a housing development. Um, this flooding occurs on this site, this isn't just hypothetical. In the last, just in twenty-twenty-four, we saw Tropical Storm Debbie, Hurricane Helene, and the unnamed storms in November, all flood at Morgan's Bridge just down Old River Road here. Um, so these are not hypothetical. Mister Forehand in his M.P.C. submissions submitted pictures going back to the nineteen-eighties showing flooding on this property. So flooding is not a hypothetical, it's a when. And we have to really think about if we want to put this many people, if we want to put these people at flood risk, if this is where we want to spend our resources in housing development. So it's not, but it's not just the people as well, it's the city who will have to expend additional resources, whether those be for rescue, for emergency response, and in the possibility of FEMA buyouts in the future, fronting some of the cost of then acquiring this land in the future. So the risks to flooding, from flooding at this property doesn't make it a great site for a housing development, and we would recommend you don't annex this, you don't rezone it, and you don't allow for housing to be built on this property.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have any more, Mr. Clerk, do we? Okay, um, Mr. Yellen, are you with the petitioner, sir?
Uh, yes, I am. Thank you, Mayor. Members of Council, Harold Yellen for the Petition of Farino Company. Uh, with me today is Mr. David Hornsby on behalf of Farino, also Mr. Jim Collins, who's our project engineer, and Ryan Thompson, who's our landscape architect. Uh, there are five items that all pertain, I, I'll get everything out at one time, I will not be back up here five times, and I'm certain the mayor will not let me come back up five times. Uh, I do want to make one correction, um, Mr. Morrow referenced petition item fifteen, we're actually sixteen.
Sixteen, right.
So we are twelve, thirteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen. Uh, as noted, the property is one-hundred-and-sixty acres in size, Old River Road, as you see on your screen. We are directly across the street from the entrance to the Savannah-Chatham Manufacturing Center. I mention that to you because City Water and Sewer is directly across the street, and that has application to our petition for flume, for rezoning, and for annexation. The property is currently zoned R.A. under the Chatham County zoning ordinance. We are requesting to be rezoned to a planned development under the city's zoning ordinance. That is if, and only if, we are annexed. And our petition expressly states we are subject to annexation. If you turn down annexation, we go away, but if you approve our annexation because we believe the City of Savannah is where we belong, then the zoning comes into effect. We have had numerous meetings with M.P.C. staff. Uh, after consultation, we thought about rezoning to one of the many zoning districts that you have in New Zoo, but we determined it made the most sense to be a P.D. And as we often do, your planned developments now incorporate as much of New Zoo as it can into the P.D. language. You have repeatedly used P.D.s for larger tracts of land. You used a P.D. for Eastern Wharf, Hopton Landing, even the Fairgrounds. So we're very comfortable with staff recommendation to make this a P.D. rather than a different zoning classification. As noted by staff, it will achieve a mix of uses and designs and development standards which are unique to the property, and I'm going to quote staff, "P.D.s ensure orderly and thorough planning, review procedures that will result in a cohesive development," and that's exactly what we're looking for here. Uh, lastly, um, we'd like to share with you that we do believe that this is an ideal site for development. It has its challenges, but we believe it is ideal across the street from the Savannah-Chatham Industrial Center and a stone's throw from the New Hyundai site. We will address what staff has also referred to as an urgent need for additional housing. Importantly, we don't expect this development to happen overnight. We are optimistic that we will phase in over a period of about nine years, maybe nine to ten years. When we scheduled our neighborhood meeting, and maybe I should have led with that, we did schedule neighborhood meetings. At our meeting, there were a number of comments, some were concerned about the impact of flooding, and I think there was a concern that we were going to build this whole thing out in year one. Let me assure everyone, we are not building this project in year one. It will be phased in over nine or ten years. We will be working with the city, we'll be working with the county, we're going to be working with SITA and with our neighbors to ensure that this is a sustainable neighborhood. If you don't mind, I, I'm, if you have specific questions about neighbors' concerns or the concern of the prior speaker about floodplain, Mr. Collins is here, and he can address any questions you may have. We would, however, ask for approval of staff recommendation for the flume, the future land use map, which was approved by the M.P.C. We would ask for approval of the zoning, which was unanimously approved by the M.P.C. And of course, the third feature is annexation. We'd like for this property to be annexed into the City of Savannah. Uh, with that, Mayor, we're happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? I do have public comment, uh, from Ms. Carrie Bieber regarding items twelve, thirteen, sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen, um, in opposition. Are there any other, uh, comments from the public, from the public? Their motion to close.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I make a motion. Second.
Probably moved and seconded, that we closed the public hearing, all in favor of the case by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Aldo woman Shabazz, and Aldo woman, uh, Miller Blakely, and then I saw somebody on this side. Okay, Aldo woman Lanier.
Okay, in reference to, um, the, the zoning, um, for this property and for the future land use, um, map, the zoning and the annexation, uh, this property, uh, city manager, uh, I know that I've been working really closely with you and, uh, Ms. Liddy on this, and, um, we have, uh, we have all our, our comments and, and concerns all in order, uh, in reference to this, um, land. Am I correct, uh, city manager and Ms. Liddy?
And from the city perspective, we, we have no concern with the recommendation from M.P.C. or staff.
Okay. I've been on top of this, and I just want to make these comments for the public. I know that the, the, uh, the West Chatham County Community Watch, uh, they, they are good folks, and they keep their eyes on, um, keep their eyes and ears and, and, uh, just, they do a good job of, of helping to, uh, hear and listen, take in the concerns of, uh, those citizens that live in Chatham County, that lives in Chatham County on that side of the west. Um, so with that being said, Mrs. Beaver submitted a letter, and I just, just want to make sure that, and I'm pretty sure that we have covered these bases, but for public purposes, um, in her letter, uh, she stated that, uh, this property is located entirely in a floodplain along the O'Geechey River. The river is prone to flooding, uh, and river levels are predicted to continue rising in a foreseeable future. The, uh, river, O'Geechey River is known for its recreational activities, uh, it contains wonderful, uh, water abilities for the public, and, uh, the nature of the area itself is in order. So my question to, um, to the attorney, but more, more from my, my, my place with this is from the engineering, um, point of view, and I would like to hear the comments, uh, that, that you all have worked on in reference to the engineering and the flooding situation in this case.
Yes, ma'am, we would be happy to address, and I'm going to ask Mr. Collins to address your, your concerns.
Mayor Johnson, members of council, I'm Jim Collins with Thomason Hutton, I'm a civil engineer. Um, the, um, we're primarily guided on this property, and it's true, it's one-hundred percent in the floodplain. We develop in the floodplain, uh, all the time, Eastern Wharf, Hutchinson Island, the development around the arena. And the city had the foresight and vision to create the flood damage prevention ordinance to guide development in those areas. And as Mr. Morrow pointed out, the, uh, ordinance was recently revised to require all finished floors to be two feet above the base flood elevation. The base flood elevation here, uh, on the south side of the property is twenty-five, and it's, um, twenty-six on the north side, so we have to be two feet above that elevation for any finished floor. In addition to that, and these provisions were in the ordinance when it was originally adopted, and, and they're, they're really good provisions, uh, we have to demonstrate that we will not, that the development of this property will not cause any rise in the one-hundred-year stage elevation of the O'Geechey River. And we have to do that with a pretty intense, uh, complex and detailed model, and that's to be reviewed by the city engineering staff when we get in the development phases of this project. In addition to that, we have to demonstrate that we practice volumetric mitigation, and what that means is for a, any amount of fill that we place in the floodplain, we have to excavate out an equal volume of fill. Um, you know, I would point out that, um, and Mr. Kirch is correct, we had, uh, when, when Hurricane Debbie came through, I actually went out there, because it's a great opportunity for an engineer to actually see what happens during an extreme event, and, um, the water got up to elevation twenty-three. As I said, you know, we would be, um, you know, the base flood elevations, twenty-five to twenty-six, we would be two feet above that. Um, but I would point out that the O'Geechey River, um, it has flooded in the past, um, and, you know, I think, I think we do see more extreme events, and the good thing is the city's flood damage prevention ordinance, um, was revised to add the additional foot to help accommodate that. So we, we follow that ordinance very strictly, um, we, we, we're, we're very used to developing and designing projects in the floodplain, and we, we, we have no concerns about this project, uh, from that regard.
Thank you so much, and this is a good thing because in certain areas, uh, in my district, um, because of, uh, when they were developed, um, like more of the, the, the inner core of my district, uh, they were developed, um, from the, the beginning of time of the City of Savannah. But with the, um, the ordinances that, that's in place now, and along with the amendments that are, that have, that have been made, that has been made, uh, to our flood damage prevention, um, is, is really taking a, a, a future, futuristic look at our flooding conditions, the climate change conditions, um, of, of what is happening real-time and for the future. So, um, with all of this and all the questions I've been asking, uh, in reference to, um, the O'Geechey River and with the O'Geechey River, uh, keepers, thank you so much for being here, you too for keeping your eyes and ears, um, on the ground in reference to, to the development, uh, of the western portion of my district. Thank you all so much for your, your work. Um, but I also thank the city and, uh, M.P.C. for just keeping their hands on the plow when it comes to, um, uh, making sure that our ordinances for these developers are in place, uh, for the betterment of our community and for the betterment of, of future, um, development, developmental areas, uh, in our, our city. Right now, Mr. Mayor, that's, that's all I need to say right now.
Thank you, Aldo woman Miller Blakely.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Mr. Morrow. Okay, you said once this property is developed, it will be up to, I guess, the developers to inform the residents there that they will be impacted by noise, dust, and it was a third thing, I believe, from the military. third thing, I believe, from the military base.
Right, exactly. So typically, there's efforts from the federal planners on installations to work with local governments to come out with a notification system, in essence, because the health and kind of viability of bases depends on communities being able to live with them. So it is most likely the jurisdiction somehow that will need to notify these potential residents there. My expectation, just being involved with this the way that I am, I expect that these would be apartments. I think we're probably going to see a limitation of single-family detached and we might see some townhouses or something to that effect. But if the bulk of these are apartments, it could potentially be placed upon the management of the apartment complex to let folks know that this is the nature of the activities that they're hearing.
Okay. And you said the noise, dust, and it was something else, right?
I'm sorry, noise, smoke, dust, et cetera.
Okay. The engineers here, they would know what's going to go there, correct? Is a developer here?
Bruno didn't come.
They know whether or not it's going to be apartments or single-family homes, right?
Mr. Morrow is correct. It's going to be primarily multifamily apartments.
Apartment.
But because this is a nine-year phase-in, the market's going to dictate which way we go. And I would hate for anybody to look back on today's hearing and say, Mr. Yellen promised just X. It's going to change over time. We're planning for commercial on the front as part of our plan development and all residential, either single-family or mixed-use on the back. My best guess, like Mr. Morrow, is that it will be multifamily.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Riverkeeper. Ben is your first name. I don't remember what your last name was. I have a question for you.
Thank you. It's Mr. Kirsch.
Kirsch, okay, thank you. This is in a flood zone, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Can you explain to me what happens when the river floods? And it was brought to my attention as well that a person at the MPC, it flooded to 27.5 feet to her garage, or something to that particular conversation. Could you please expound on that?
Sure. So when the river floods, it's usually from big storm events. You have a lot of rain running off into the river, the rivers, the path it goes to. The floodplain is based on historic data. It's based on estimates of what those flood risks are. So based on historic data, based on a climate that no longer exists and is changing, we're saying, this comes from FEMA, from the federal government, they say that this is the 1% risk of the most dangerous flood that could happen. So that's the 100-year, a 1% risk. So all it would take is a little over that to, you know, go above that base flood elevation. So all of this is relying on historic data, historic rain patterns that no longer exist, and, you know, our best estimates of what that would be. But taking a more forward look and, you know, probably not building in the floodplain is the best way to ensure that there will be no flood damage. You can elevate it as high as you want. There's always the possibility of a flood reaching that height.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Kirsch, both of Savannah's in a floodplain, though. I mean, when we talk about that, it's not as if this is unusual. I mean, I live in a floodplain. I think we're all basically in the same land, right?
Yes, yes. And it's a question of, is the construction worth the risk of that? Is there an alternative site that a similar housing project could take place where this site is also specifically next to the river, where flooding will originate from the most? A lot of the floodplains you see is runoff and it's those quick flash floods you see.
Right.
These have the threat to be day-long floods, days-long floods that, you know, you see another hurricane. Helena, tropical storm Debbie just stall out over us. The river is going to be where it floods.
But that would be more of the exception, not the norm, right? I mean, we would see more flash floods than we would a river overflowing. First, and then secondly, I think, wouldn't that be the risk that the developer would take in being able to do that? I mean, if they're going to do this knowing that this situation exists, then that risk is totally on them, right?
So two questions here.
Sure.
It's hard to predict what is going to happen in the future as storms become more intense. I don't think anybody saw Asheville, Oregon, or Asheville, North Carolina, being a victim to a flood. So it's hard to predict the future. There is risk of development in the floodplain to the developer. But once that is sold, once the developer sells that property, they're done with it. They don't carry that risk anymore. There's a lot of upfront capital, a lot of costs that go into building this. But once it's sold, they aren't there for the next 30 years, most likely. They aren't the ones who are going to be living there, unless that's how the project is set up. I don't know the specifics of how the property is being owned. But those homeowners, the property owners, the renters, they'll be the ones on the front line of the potential flooding.
Exactly.
Fair enough.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I saw Aldo Millenier.
Thank you. Let me see my first question. Comment first. So we are experiencing these growing pains here in Savannah-Chatham and our metropolitan area. Wonderful problem to have. We are growing. And we're trying to manage these, the impacts of all of this growing. And what we have here is the property owner petitioning for this action. And then we having the community and the nonprofits and the people who take care of the area having an issue with that. And here we are trying to find a win-win. We want everybody to go home happy. We want to negotiate some things and see if we can make this work. Now, we're, what happens a lot in this environment is that we're building and we're expanding and our infrastructure is behind the growth. And, you know, if it's 101, we're looking at, you go in and you put your infrastructure, you put your skeleton in first, and then you build your body, you build your city around it. And we haven't done a really good job in doing that. So then, the people who live in the area, they are negatively impacted by the growth because of locals haven't gotten out in front of putting that good firm infrastructure in place. And it creates quality of life issues for the residents. Now, we also know that we need housing. We desperately need housing. And whether or not that housing is going to be affordable, it depends on a lot, including supply and demand. So the most supply that we have, we're going to have lower costs. And when the supply is low, of course, you're going to have these exponential prices in houses not as affordable. So we need the housing. We know we need that. Now, if we need housing, and we're talking about apartments, it's, I'm very interested in knowing if we look at, go back to maybe 2020, and since I've been asking for this IZ inclusionary zoning, that would require a percentage of the apartments built to be affordable. If we add it on, however many, we're talking about building here, say we up now to about 14,000 since that time, that's 1,400 affordable units we could have had in this market. And if we're really concerned about affordable housing, then we need to look at the policies that we are responsible for creating on this council and making sure that we follow through because we've missed so many opportunities to be able to have more affordable units. The landowner desires this change. So I was also curious about the Fort Stewart impact and how are we going to codify that and where's the compliance agency that's going to monitor that? At what point in the process do we warn future purchasers or residents that they might be experiencing these environmental injustice issues? So I haven't heard with that it's going to be managed to my satisfaction. I did have a question, Mr. Morrow, about your adjoining jurisdictions map, just out of curiosity. And you showed the proximity to Bryan and Effingham and a little bit of Chatham up there. That yellow over there, that's Savannah? What's the, I couldn't make out the little street. So what are we looking at exactly there?
This is Four Lakes Parkway. It's the entrance to the Savannah-Chatham Manufacturing Center.
That was annexed sometime recently, too?
Several years ago.
Several years ago, okay. I just wanted to make sure I had the bearings on that. And the last thing I wanted to mention was that, of course, we are experiencing this climate change and all of this sporadic weather situations and conditions that we're experiencing. And in the last year, when the Oguichi River and the canal flooded, it even impacted Tremont Park because the canal comes all the way down to Springfield, you know the route. And so we had people as close as Tremont Park, Highway 17, experiencing flooding to the extent they had to be evacuated from their homes. So I'm not really comfortable with that two feet above. I know there's some kind of science behind that, how you all determine, you know, what, how many feet we needed to increase. But as we have been seeing the last few years, that hasn't necessarily been enough and we don't have enough, maybe, support programs in place to mitigate that. So that's a little concern. I think we are able to do that, we just haven't done it yet. And I'm sure drainage and everybody's looking at it so we can find some solution. From where I'm sitting right now, I think that the engineering can manage elevating the properties where they won't be subject to every rain instance. But I'm also concerned about the people who live in the area and the quality of life and us not maybe having the means or the infrastructure in place to take some of that pressure off of them as that area continue to grow. So basically, just some comments and thank you for answering that.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, it's time for us to go ahead and move forward on this.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to close.
All right, well, we've already closed. So this is a petition to amend the future land use map and the zoning map, both of which is required for annexation. I will remind council that also our responsibility is to help grow our base. And we do that through annexation. And so in growing it through annexation, we're able to bank that growth, so to speak. And the growth ends up paying for itself as well. New opportunities, new land expands our map, also has paid for the things that help us do and be who we are. And so if there is an investment here, a major investment is being made, hopefully the developers understand that investment and hopefully anybody buying it in the future would understand what they are getting themselves into. So let's move, let's start, we have to start, I believe, with number 17, which is, well, 16 is required, 16 and 17, 18 have to be done first, right?
Yes, sir.
It's all on first reading.
It's all on first reading.
So that's all that went on first reading?
That's right. And next, at the next meeting, you'll have a second reading, which will include the annexation.
Beautiful.
And then the...
That's even more beautiful.
So there's the future land use map and the zoning map is on first reading today.
Right. So, all right, so...
And number 16.
16 is also on first reading.
On first reading for the annexation. Yes, sir.
All items related to this project are on first reading. As is an annexation.
Correct. So, thank you. That was 13. So now we'll move to item number 14, which is a petition of Robert Brandon Jr. on behalf of New Hampstead Holdings LLC to amend 35.5 acres of the New Hampstead master plan for the parcels located 2100 and 2501 Little Neck Road in Aldomatic District 5. Mr. Morrow.
Excellent. Thank you, sir. Our final zoning petition for today. This is a request essentially to update the New Hampstead Plan Unit Development text and master plan. Those of you who have been here for quite a while, you know that New Hampstead first appeared on the scene, I believe, around 2006. I'm going to jump ahead, yeah, 2006. And so we have seen now a third kind of formal iteration of this particular plan development. And this has changed form since it appeared last year. There was initially a small push to reclaim some additional density. I'd like to state for the record that the petitioner has declined to attempt to increase their density count. And they are simply seeking today to go back and realign standards that were created many years ago to reflect NUZO and changing market circumstances. And so it's essentially the same development, just made a little bit more efficient. So to show you our future land use and zoning map, you can see that we are out, this is a very large development, inclusive initially of about 11,000 units, brought down now to just over 9,000. And you can see that it was, prior to our current sort of approach to plan development assignment in the future land use map, it reflects a number of different uses that are actually taking place on the ground. So again, reflective of an older sort of development approach. But essentially, this is a plan development. So just to summarize these for you, you all have received from Mr. Brandon a packet that goes into much greater detail outlining the specific changes. But I'll run through these quickly. With regard to the proposed text amendment, there are sections, four different sections that received updates. In general provisions, there was alignment of terminology and processes with City of Savannah's NUZO. There was also a change to the method for amending the PUD. And so it now references NUZO. There were changes to track use classifications. In the zoning districts, they have essentially codified the density cap at 9,819 units. And they've added a reversion clause to indicate that for any tract that has been assigned a number of units, any that were not built at the closeout of development on that tract can revert back to the master developer for reallocation, again, not to exceed the 9,819. There are also enumeration of uses as permitted by tract and development standards that have changed just a little with regard to general development requirements, alignment of development and permitting terminology with NUZO parking and signage standards, and finally, some small changes to definitions. And then to look at the map, you can see that essentially we have two tracks that are being requested to be reassigned in terms of their use category. 2501 Little Neck Road changed parcel I7 to MF6 to allow for apartments or townhomes. And at 2100 Little Neck Road to change parcel C7B to Village or VIL4 to allow for a mix of residences and commercial uses. Just to show you here the authority, this was the current approach to changing the master plan. And here it identifies that a substantial modification is a change in the type, location, or size of a multifamily land use in a PUD. This process would be changed by this request and it would then align with those set forth in Section 6 of the zoning ordinance under NUZO. So this is one of the changes as well. With that, MPC staff and the planning commission have both recommended approval. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anybody have any comments? I do not have any comment cards on item number 14.
Mr. Mayor.
And Mr. Brandon, that might work to your advantage, so don't get too excited.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I would like to move that the first reading be considered...
No, we need to close the hearing.
Oh, I'd like to close the hearing. Second motion.
Then probably move to second it, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number 15, Aldo woman Shabazz.
Yes, sir. I'd like to move that the first reading be considered the second and the ordinance placed upon its passage and passed.
Second.
And probably move to second it, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. See, Mr. Brandon? Easy. All right. Item number 19, this is an ordinance to amend Chapter 1, Personal Conduct of Part 9 offenses of the Code of the City of Savannah, Georgia, to regulate urban camping and improper use of public spaces, to appeal all ordinances in conflict here with and for other purposes. This has been something that has been debated. I had not seen it in its initial stages. It was not shared with me. However, I've always said, and I will continue to say, this city will not be one that criminalizes homelessness, that is a city that prides itself on being the hostess city of the South or a city of being welcoming, that we have to be welcoming for all and all means all. That being said, we have significant issues at times with some of our homeless neighbors, some on the criminal side that have caused issues for us to address. I think City Manager and I had talked back and forth with this just philosophically. I think city manager and I had talked back and forth with this, um, just philosophically, about how do we strike a balance in ensuring that we are treating people with dignity that they deserve? Dignity, we believe, is inherent regardless of their address. And then also, how do we protect the city? How do we, how we provide livability or reasonable standard of livability? Um, and those conversations, uh, continue. Uh, so to that end, uh, there is an ordinance, um, that's been requested to be put on our agenda regarding this. I don't know, Mr. Manager, if you want to, um, you want to summarize it? We do have, um, some, uh, public comment regarding this.
Uh, thank you. Mr. Mayor, this ordinance amendment would clarify the unlawfulness for any person to camp and store personal property on city property or to interfere with public ingress and egress. This ordinance amendment makes clear that no person may be arrested for violating this code section unless he or she has received oral or written warning from the Savannah Police Department to cease the prohibited conduct. The violator fails to comply with the warning issued, he or she may be arrested for violation of this section. The amendment based on an ordinance, this amendment is based on an ordinance adopted in Atlanta. Um, it's, um, supported by the Savannah-Chatham Interagency Council on Homelessness, which is our community table and planning organization for homelessness, as well as the Chatham-Savannah Authority for the homeless. Um, I'll note that Chatham County is considering a complimentary, um, ordinance for unincorporated Chatham County areas tomorrow, um, at their meeting. Um, I'm also aware that they will be, um, considering adoption of the ICH strategic plan, uh, which this council led in adopting, um, and also adopting the, uh, very humane encampment policy, um, as verbatim for the one that I issued as a directive to staff several weeks ago. Um, I'll say that I think that this council and the work that we've done in providing resources and proven solutions to homelessness, um, at least in the last three and a half years since I've been here, and I know that the efforts had preceded my time certainly, have been pretty historic, and we've seen an increase in the capacity and an increase in the service and the increase in, um, the compassion and the solution that we're looking for, uh, people who are experiencing homelessness. Uh, we can also reflect on, uh, like communities and communities in California and Oregon, um, uh, that also took great strides to produce the kind of, uh, system that could help lift people up and, um, help people achieve their full human potential, um, in dignified ways, but also had very permissive laws around the use of public space. Um, and you see a complete one-eighty in the policies happening, um, in those communities as, uh, those permissive public space laws became untenable, um, as public space became unusable, unsafe, um, and, um, unsanitary with, uh, acute public safety and public health issues that exist where people, um, live or do acts of living, um, without infrastructure. This amendment, uh, does not have a fiscal impact to the City of Savannah, does not change substantially or wholly our approach to homelessness or to people experiencing homelessness from a public, um, safety perspective. It does give SPD, um, a new tool or two in the toolbox to be able to, um, help protect public space, um, help to provide some therapeutic disruption for, um, people in our community who are disruptive, not because they have nowhere else to be, um, but because they're, um, being disruptive, um, regardless of that situation. Um, so, I understand this is, this is a very passionate issue. Uh, I think this council has been incredibly, um, forward-thinking in the resources that it has provided and the service expansion that it has provided, and, um, this is a, this is one amendment to an ordinance that helps, um, you know, you know, protect the other side of the homelessness issue, which is the impact to communities and public space that we see when, when, um, these issues persist. Uh, this is not a Savannah-specific issue, this is a, uh, issue that is prevalent, um, in every American city. It is, um, and, uh, and, and too often, the pressure to solve these issues is, comes locally, um, but this is, uh, these aren't, homelessness is not caused by local issues, it's caused by, um, national issues and, and, and a lot of different cracks in the system. And I've worked on homelessness, um, my entire public career, um, and I know the issue well. So, I, this is why I feel comfortable recommending this ordinance and supporting it, um, and, uh, and not without the deliberation and the support of the Interagency Council on Homelessness and the, um, authority for the homeless as well.
Does this criminalize homelessness?
No, sir.
Are people who are in public spaces, parks, are they forcibly removed for being in a park, laying in on a park bench, sitting on the ground?
No.
But if they fall asleep?
Well, yeah, fall, uh, sleeping.
They're gone.
Um, so there are...
I think, I think that's why, I think those are the, we have to talk about instances.
Yeah.
Because I appreciate the ICH weighing in on it, but on the other end of it, we know that it also comes down to that individual's circumstance.
I think probably more than anybody are Savannah police officers who deal with all sorts of different people and all sorts of different, um, perspectives, especially, um, our Northwest precinct officers and our South Side precinct officers. Um, they have a tremendous amount of respect, um, for people, uh, especially people experiencing homelessness in this situation. They understand that there's very little tools that SPD has to be able to cure that issue, right? Taking somebody, um, to jail isn't going to solve their homelessness. And, you know, that, the, the, and in all likelihood, that person is going to be in the same situation that they were in before being brought to jail, uh, four hours or six hours later when they're released.
If the jail takes them.
That's right. So, this isn't really an issue of a solution to homelessness. The solutions to homelessness are the things that this council continues to invest in, permanent supportive housing, rapid rehousing, a better crisis response system, how do we address the affordability, housing affordability crisis, how do we ensure we have better wages and, um, um, better upward mobility programs, et cetera, et cetera. This does help to make sure that we can, um, protect our public spaces and make sure that they are available for their intended use for everybody. Everybody should be able to go to Forsyth Park and lay on the lawn on a bright summer day. Um, everybody should be able to take respite on our beautiful park benches. Um, and, and that's, that's the same whether you have an address or you don't have an address. It's some of the behaviors and some of the dangerous situations that sometimes people, um, put themselves in around egress and ingress, um, that we don't currently have a tool to, um, compel people to change that behavior. And this gives SPD that tool.
Ladies and gentlemen, we do have some, uh, public comments, we'll take those. This is on first reading, um, and so therefore, it won't be voted upon today, um, but it is on first reading.
A question, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
It's in order, question?
Huh?
Question in order.
Well, this regarding this?
Yes.
Yeah, we'll, we'll take public comment and then we'll do counsel. All right, so, um, as a reminder, uh, for these comments, we'll, we'll take these now, it's two, two minutes. I have, um, Miranda Bronner, Chase Rosen, uh, Quinn Flutter, Fluter?
I'll take it.
Pardon me?
I'll accept it as is.
Okay, well, Quinn, uh, and then Stephanie Capel. Uh, so, you have two minutes, you come and say your name, um, and once you have indicated your name for the record, the clock begins, um, and then the two minutes, I'm gonna be really nice until your time is up. All right, so we'll start with Miranda.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Can they also include their address?
Okay. All right, Miranda? Name of your address.
My name is Miranda Bronner, eleven Barnett Drive. Savannah City Council, I urge you to oppose this agenda item that seeks to persecute, terrorize, and incarcerate people who have been deprived of housing by our city's profit-seeking landlords and the politicians who collaborate with them. I would like to tell you about my friend, Alicia, who is one of the many people who could be affected by unjust ordinances like this that we see across the country. Alicia is one of the hardest-working, most resilient people I know. She's an artist, and when she's not working hours, long hours at Waffle House, she's drawing beautiful pictures and sharing them with the world. And yet, this is the kind of person that you want to evict and banish from our society? We are raised as children to believe that if you work hard, you respect others, then things will be all right for you. But what kind of lesson are you teaching people like Alicia? That if you follow all the rules, if you care for the people around you and spread joy to the world, then the state will still come after you and lock you in a dark cell because they don't like to be reminded of the fact that they've pushed you off your land so that you, and you are now trying to make a home for yourself wherever you can? When Alicia entered our lives, my family and I gave her support, but we couldn't give her everything she needs because we don't have the resources that a state has. Despite our support, she chose to leave Savannah because she knew how inaccessible our housing market is here. She knew that no matter how hard she worked, a proper house of her own would still be out of reach here. When I think about what makes Savannah beautiful, I think of artists like Alicia brightening up the city squares with splashes of color. I think of the musicians, the teachers, the historians and faith leaders sharing their passions with locals and immigrants and tourists alike. But if this ordinance passes, we'll see, uh, more and more of that beauty and joy and knowledge vanishing. Already, we see fear hanging over the city as officials who promised to protect the people betrayed them by handing them over to immigration enforcement, cramming them into prisons with agonizing conditions or deporting them into, into places ravaged by the imperialist policies of those same officials. And instead of seeing the unnecessary suffering they've created and changing course by making reparations, we see these officials brainstorming new ways to cannibalize their own communities even further to accelerate our descent into mass suicide.
Thank you. Um, you know we ain't deporting nobody, right?
Sure am.
All right, so let me, before, before you even go there, so, your friend Alicia is in Savannah? She's homeless?
She was.
Okay, she, she homeless now?
But in another city, yes.
Okay, all right, 'cause I mean, we, we'll help Alicia.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you. Chase Rosen? Okay, your name and your address, please.
Yes, sir, good afternoon, my name is Chase Rosen, I live at forty-one oh nine Fenwick Village Drive. I am a county resident, however, I am here today on behalf of Savannah DSA, Savannah Democratic Socialists of America. I'm here to represent our chapter, which is based in Savannah, and the hundreds of signatures we have received, uh, excuse me, the seven hundred signatures we received on our petition against the county's ordinance and the now four hundred in-counting signatures we have received against the city's ordinance. Passing an ordinance, changing local laws to facilitate the removal of unhoused people is criminalizing homelessness. Criminalizing their only shelter when there is not an existing guaranteed solution is unjust, it is bound to fail. I understand that there is much more work, excuse me, I'll put away the paper. I understand that there's been a lot of effort from everyone here, from everyone behind the scenes. I understand that there's a lot of hard work and many good intentions here. I want to be clear about that. I know that this is not about criminalizing the unhoused, I know this is not about arresting anyone. Nonetheless, what we are looking at here today, what is on the paper in front of you is something, is an amendment which allows for the eviction at the discretion of the police, who, yes, must give a warning, but it can be written or verbal, and it is again up to their discretion as to what counts as a warning. It is an amendment that allows someone else to determine whether your limited possessions are worth keeping and saving or throwing away. It is an amendment that ignores the causes and the proven solutions of homelessness. Housing First, for example, is a proven approach that dramatically reduces homelessness. By providing unconditional and permanent housing, individuals and families are able to find stability in their lives, are able to find employment, they are far more likely to, uh, achieve sobriety or even want to achieve sobriety. By providing unconditional and permanent housing, lives are saved and improved, while Savannah's population continues to grow, the housing's out to grow, the housing supply, what are we really doing here?
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Please provide a board of housing.
Thank you. Quinn, last name begins with an F?
I'll get to it.
What, what, what is it?
Uh, my last name is McHugh Flouette, it's a French-Canadian name misspelled by French-Canadians.
All right.
Uh, thank you to the mayor and the council for the opportunity to speak on this issue. Uh, as you can tell, uh, we with Savannah DSA are very passionate about housing, as are anyone who lives in a home. Any policy that attempts to address homelessness without providing housing will only exacerbate the problem of homelessness. While we wait for solutions, our present treatments must still make sense and have immediate positive effect, or there is no worthwhile use in them. Homelessness is not a problem that disappears when you paint it over or attempt to push it elsewhere, particularly not in a time when the cost of living is skyrocketing and the housing crisis is pushing many employed Georgians even into homelessness themselves. What do we think will happen as our homeless neighbors become more desperate for food and shelter as we remove them from the ones they've built for themselves? Do we think petty theft will go down? Will we see less break-ins? Even by the most punishing view of our homeless neighbors, this doesn't solve the problem, it's not even a Band-Aid, it is barely a sheet to cover them with on the street.
Come on.
I implore anyone with constituents in their ear saying, "The homeless are out of control, they won't stop asking me for money, they're everywhere I look." Ask yourself, will punishing them further, pushing their existence to further and further extremes solve any of that? For many working Savanians, we are far closer to being homeless than we are to being homeowners. I urge you to govern in our service accordingly. Thank you for my time.
Thank you. Stephanie Capel?
Good afternoon, Stephanie Capel, five-one-six Siler Avenue, Executive Director of the Interagency Council on Homelessness for Savannah and Chatham County. I do want to just again stress, the ICH and the Homeless Authority both support this ordinance because we have recognized the work and effort that the city has done to provide support to our ICH strategic plan, to ensure that we are getting funding to our service providers to expand our services, and also because of your very thoughtful support of an encampment management policy, which, like this ordinance, focuses on connecting individuals to services and helping them get out of their homelessness situation. So, we are, you know, we understand that these are difficult topics and challenges to deal with, but we do believe that this ordinance does help connect people to services first and helps them gain access to possible solutions for their homelessness. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, um, this is on first reading, so, uh, to be continued. Thank you all so much.
Mr. Mayor, can we make comments?
Yes.
Council members? I just wasn't sure if anybody wanted to make comments.
Yes. First reading, please, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I'll go after you.
Go ahead.
I'll go after you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this is a very sensitive subject for multiple people, especially the second district. For us being the district of hospitality and, uh, multiple businesses, uh, we see on one end of that conversation, we see, uh, business owners and hotels who have individuals who will either lie down in front of their business and, uh, they have to find alternative methods to get people in and out, and they're losing funding because of those efforts. And the quality of life of the businesses is one thing in question, then we have a quality of life of the individuals who are asking for help. But as a Christian, you know, we think about what's going on in Matthew twenty-five and forty, it emphasizes that the actions towards the least of us echoes the treatment of how we treat Christ himself. So, we still talk about how we're gonna continue to work alongside of our businesses, uh, our residents, and the people who are homeless and ruthless, we're gonna make sure that we, uh, we do all that we can. I've had a conversation with some businesses and, um, some of our partners that are putting forth effort to have some, uh, money put aside to help some of our homeless people go back home where they came from. Um, a lot of efforts been made by others jurisdictions to bring their homeless people here and drop them off in our city. But we want to continue to make sure that our homeless people are, uh, given all of the options that they need, and, but in the light of all of those considerations, I appreciate you, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate the city manager and staff for looking for other options, um, to make sure everything that we do in these readings that is not going to criminalize what homelessness is, because some of us, um, even up here, we don't, we don't alone know everybody's, uh, lifestyle, but sometimes you can be a sickness or a paycheck away from being one of those people that are either... that are either asking or using the thoroughfares for housing. But again, in light of these considerations, rather than resorting to a punitive measure, we are continuing to advocate for the support services and policies to address the root cause of homelessness. And you know, the examples of all of this, we're going to definitely support our businesses, but at the same time, we're going to reach out and give a helper hand to those that is the least of us.
Thank you. Alderman Perti?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is definitely a very complex and difficult conversation to have. I guess that's why we're sitting up here today. It is hard. For 25 years, I have worked with homeless individuals. I sit on the Homeless Authority Board, volunteered for different groups, and been out there feeding the homeless, and I've worked with several nonprofits to do so. I remember probably about five years ago, when I was one of the members of council that championed a very, what I thought at the time was successful piece of city ordinance, which was the pedestrian safety ordinance, to keep pedestrians out of the median and keep pedestrians off the side of the roadways. And at the time, people thought we were trying to criminalize homelessness and criminalize those who may be less fortunate than others, and when in fact, it was just another tool that we could use to help keep people safe and help connect people to the right services. I will tell you that in my 25 years of dealing with the homeless and working in police work, I worked in West Savannah for a while, for a long time. And West Savannah, South Side, there's a lot of homeless folks, there's a lot of homeless folks downtown, they're all over the place. It's not just Savannah, it's everywhere. And we have done, I think, some phenomenal work with the ICH, the Homeless Authority, the city. Mr. City Manager, you remember when we used, I couldn't remember how much of the CARES money for homeless, for homelessness, and curing homelessness, or addressing homelessness in Savannah, in the city of Savannah? And what we can do is never enough. It's never enough. And I'm not advocating for this, and I'm not advocating against it, but I'm going to tell you that there are some huge issues and there are some constraints that our police officers have in dealing with our homeless folks here in Savannah. One of those is getting those folks connected to the right services. The other thing is giving them a tool to be able to remove them from a place when they've committed criminal activity, and it's hard to get them removed from a place. I had a homeless person that was living in one of my parks in the district. We spent $2.5 million, a little bit more than $2.5 million, to fix the park, make it nice, and have the community enjoy it, and they did. And then I had a homeless community move in there, and I tried to give them help. And some of them are, they have mental issues, they have addiction issues. It's hard to get them, those folks that have those issues, to understand that we're there to help. I'm not saying that we should criminalize it, because I don't think we should. I don't think there's a single person on this council dais that believes we should criminalize homelessness. We have to figure out a way to start working together as a community while holding people accountable for their actions. And when we encounter criminal elements, homeless folks, I don't care if you're homeless, I don't care if you have a roof over your head, I don't care where you live, but when you do wrong, you do wrong. And it seems too often that the criminal element of someone who's homeless gets overlooked because they are homeless. I had a lady in my district get assaulted, beat up by a homeless person living in the park, in one of my parks. And it's sad, because we couldn't get that person moved out of there because they were in a public place. And they've complained time and time again to get that person out of there. So yes, I understand the frustration. I understand the frustration. And you will find nobody that's a bigger advocate than a few of us up here for homeless folks. Two of us up here sit on the Homeless Authority Board, and we work day in and day out, and I work weekends to try to help folks. I go into these camps, I talk to these folks every day, every day. I'm part of this, this group that goes out there. We have folks like, you know, most of our church is in the area, The Dive, if anybody's ever heard of that, Family Promise, all of these groups, all of us together, the city, we are trying to connect homeless folks with their family members. We are trying to get them to the right areas. If I could, I would build as much affordable housing or housing that's free for folks that need to live in there. We just don't have the money. And the money that we do have, we're trying to strategically make it work. I don't think that people should be arrested for sleeping in a park, but I don't think that people should be allowed to put a tent city in a park either and terrorize folks that live in that neighborhood, because that's what's happened in my area. And it's sad, because I can see the property crime increasing, and it has increased. And how do we hold people accountable for that? I love my neighbor as much as the next human being, whether you have a home or not, but I just want, whatever we do next, to be able to use it as a tool. Police officers have discretion. That man sitting back there with those four stars on his shoulder has one of the most, one of the hardest jobs in the city, and he's got 500, 600-some folks that he's accountable for. And he gives them awesome opportunity every day to have discretion to go out there and keep us safe, but yet make those determinations whether or not somebody goes to jail. And with a city ordinance, they have discretion, okay? And we can use that as a tool in our toolbag if we move forward with this. If we don't, we have to figure out a solution. But I do believe that nobody wants to criminalize homelessness. I do not, at all. But I think we have to, we have to get beyond, we have to get beyond what hasn't worked and what's not working, and try to figure out a solution to what works. Because when you're out there every day and you see this stuff, it doesn't go away. I can paint a picture for you all day long, but until you're out there yourself every single day with homeless folks, you just don't know. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, Alderman Bell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Alderman Perti. In fact, he said a lot of what I would like to intend, what I would like to say. But his statements are this segue to the declaration that this is not, this ordinance is not intended to be a violation of anybody's civil rights, it's not intended to criminalize homelessness. But as I listened to the speeches and the statistics and the accomplishments made at the Homeless Authority's annual meeting on yesterday, their breakfast meeting, it was interesting to me afterwards in talking to the director, when she said that what we are seeing and what we are experiencing is the results of 20 or 30 bad actors. In other words, we are not criminalizing a group of people or the status of their living conditions. With this ordinance is an attempt to criminalize behavior. It's not the state of being or the condition, the living condition of any one person, it's not the person at all, it is the behavior. We are criminalizing, attempting to criminalize criminal behavior. And as the city manager stated in his opening comments, this is just one tool. I feel proud to be a part of an organization that has led with compassion in the way that we deal, in the way that we have interacted, in the way that we have attempted to connect citizens who have, for whatever reason, find themselves unsheltered. We have tried, and we have, not only Stephanie came for, thank you, Stephanie, but the Homeless Authority and our, our Perti named other organizations that's working day in and day out to try to connect folk to services, that's what it's all about. But there are actors, 20 or 30 of them, that are really making it bad for that, a particular group of people. But as I said, was started to say, I feel proud of the work that we have done as a city, the positions that we have taken in partnering with other nonprofits, in addition to Homeless Authority, in addition to the Interagency Council on Homelessness, in addition to all of the agencies that he named. But that doesn't even speak of what churches across the community are doing, that doesn't speak of what individuals are doing on their own. But this is not an end-all, it's just one tool, as the city manager said. So it gives the police department an opportu, or at least it gives them now the right to deal with folk who need to be dealt with, and need to, people who need perhaps something stronger than, "Would you please take your, take down your tent?" There's nothing in the ordinance that says you can't sit in the park. Anybody can't sit in the park, you can't even go to sleep in the park. But it's not for a particular group of people, it's for anybody. Read the ordinance, the draft ordinance, and you'll see, it's not, never once, it's a group, specific group of people mentioned. So I say that for those of us who campaigned, when we campaigned for office, who campaigned on helping the homeless, helping, improving the housing situation, now it's time for us to join forces with organizations, us meaning the people on this dais. He told you about what he's doing, for us to join forces with some of the agencies in town that are working day in and day out, find out what can you do, Carol, what have you done? So I'm happy to report that I've been working with CSHA. I have gathered a group of volunteers who have said, "What can we do about homelessness? What can we do about affordable housing in the community?" So we have formed a group called Housing Navigators to try to help people in this community who need assistance in navigating the whole housing maze. So, yes, I am in support of it, because I think the policeman need it. Yes, people, individuals have been connected to families outside of Savannah. That's because those action agencies, like the Homeless Authority, are out every night, day in, day out, trying to connect people to services. So this is not an all-in, it's not, we're not saying that this is the panacea, the cure all, no. But it gives the police officers that particular tool when they need it. Thank you.
Thank you. I think police officers have that tool already, particularly for criminal acts. Alderman?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
I said, police officers already have that tool to address criminality by not only local ordinance, but by state law. So they already have that ability. So Alderman, Miller Blackley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Alderman Bell and Alderman Perti have already said some of the things that I would have liked to have said, but I'm going to say this, I've often mentioned this to the city manager about our streets, our city not being the pristine, beautiful city that it used to be. Am I correct, city manager?
You have said that to me many times.
Several times. And I have to say this, when I look around our city, and I'm not blaming homeless individuals, but I'm going to call some of them, like you said, I'm going to call some of them out, because it's a group of them that actually stand in the medians, stand on the corners, they beg, they leave trash when they leave those areas, they do not pick the, pick the trash up, they do not clean up behind themselves. And I've often asked, I travel from Savannah to Charleston, South Carolina, all the time. Charleston, South Carolina is clean, I don't see homelessness there, and I ask, what is it that they're doing? What are they doing that we're not doing? What is the Florida, the, right at the Florida line, I think it's St. Mary's, what are they doing that we aren't doing in our city? And what can we do to not criminalize homelessness, but to eradicate homelessness to the point where it's not so visible in our city? What can we do? This is a tool for us to help get rid of some of the, 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 thank you very much, the individuals that, the 30 individuals that Carol was talking, Alderman Bell was talking about. We have to do something, and this is that something that we, that we should be doing right now. I'm going to support it, and if we come up with any other plan that's going to get rid of it, get rid of those individuals, well, not get rid of them, but...
I was listening to your word choice, I mean...
Not even criminalize them, but you know...
Connect them with services.
Thank you very much. Connect them with services so that we could help them to not do the things that they're doing. I'm going to support it. Thank you.
I think the record will show what Charleston did with them, they transferred them somewhere else. Some to Savannah, some to North Charleston, I mean, I'm not trying to...
And among corner.
From downtown to the south side. Mr. Love, have you had a chance to, have you had a chance to? Downtown to the south side.
Alderman Lanier?
Did Mr. Love have a chance to look at this ordinance, Mr. Mayor?
He did. I believe so, I've been told. Again, I was not presented a copy of this like the rest of you all were. So, well, when I heard about, no ma'am, you did not, but when I heard about it, I said what I felt, my, my personal preferences were, being that I've been operating in that space, and so, again, I'll, I'll share my thoughts later on. Alderman Lanier?
Yes, sir, thank you. We're having this discussion because we have a problem. We have multiple problems, but this particular issue has risen to the extent that we're having this discussion, so therefore, we know we got to do something. Now, we are trying to remove the bad actors from public spaces, but what's going to happen? They're going to move on to private spaces. Now, I know West Savannah like the back of my hand, every nook and cranny, after being there 66 years and the family in our seventh generation. We haven't had a homelessness problem to as of late. And what we had in the past, some people may have been kicked off of their mother's sofa, or someone's in a cousin's house and not their own, so they're considered homeless. But what we have seen more of is individuals that's not from the area, and they are camping in certain areas. So that problem is escalating, especially after they were sort of discouraged from being downtown or on President Street. We really saw it increase after that. And I wanted to ask a question, about three years ago, I got a call, get these calls, and there was a young lady who had to leave her residence late in the night for the safety of her infant and her toddler. And that young lady sat on the park all night long because she didn't have any resources, she didn't know what to do. And the next morning, when the calls came in, we did come up with enough money to house that young lady for some time. Now, if that evening, if the officers came, would she have received the ticket?
No, ma'am, I don't believe so. I believe that, I think the reason that the Interagency Council on Homelessness supports this, the Homeless Authority supports this, is because we've built a crisis response system enough that we can help provide people assistance in that moment of crisis. So we've, and even in the pit count, the latest point in time count that the Homeless Authority, I think, kind of released yesterday, we see that, again, unsheltered homelessness is down in our community, and we see that we've expanded capacity within our emergency shelter and crisis response system. So no, that woman would not be ticketed with her infant children. We have outreach that runs all night long, vans that help support and bring people to services, and now we have, you know, even more kind of diversified services. We have partners that provide shelter for unaccompanied women, we have partners that provide housing and crisis response for families, mostly single mothers with young children, because we know that the birth of a child is the number one cause, the precipitator of homelessness in America. And so we've built out those crisis response systems. This, this ordinance is really seeking to address an ability to ensure that we're protecting our public spaces in a way that, you know, there's, homelessness is going to, homelessness is going to exist and persist. We can build a crisis response and build the resources that are going to be able to make it rare, brief, and nonrecurring. Those instances are going to happen, people are going to fall on hard times, something is going to be untenable in their living situation, and their living situation is going to end, and we need a crisis response system to be able to support that. Our crisis response system cannot be our public spaces, right? That's not a dignified place for that either. And there are plenty of places where we say, certain beha- Um, and there are plenty of places where we say certain behaviors can exist and is not appropriate to exist. Um, and I think this law is just, um, and this ordinance is just an extension of that. Um, we have been able to build out our crisis response systems. We do have strong partners in the community working. We absolutely have to do more. We have to provide more permanent supportive housing. We have to provide, um, more services for families. Um, uh, but in your instance, um, Alderwoman, no, um, that, that mother would not be ticketed and hauled, um, to county jail. That woman would be picked up and brought to a place that can help earn her family.
Thank you. One, one last comment. So the point behind that is that if we had a, a incident, you know, we, we wanna show compassion. If, if we had an incident and if Alderman Purty was going out, or the young lady who worked with the homeless people, I would feel a little bit good about that because they know how to work with individuals in these situations. And not, not saying that the police do not, but I think along with this, we might have to have an extra level of training, um, to how we're going to deal with individuals in, in this situation.
We have a specific, um, unit within our police department, the Hope Unit, um, which, um, trains and deals specifically with, um, with people experiencing homelessness. And this is their level of, this is their field of expertise. And, um, they're part of the community table. They know where our service providers are. And their number one activity, um, is trying to connect people who are in that experience to, to services that are gonna help them.
Thank you, sir.
Mister Mayor, you mentioned Northwest Precent, which is primarily downtown, and we have homelessness throughout our city.
Yes.
Um, and I guess, again, I'll, we'll talk offline about where I am. But, uh, how do we make sure that our entire, um, force has not only the training and the opportunity to understand how, uh, how, how to utilize judgment and discretion as it relates to individuals experiencing homelessness? Um, that's something I wanted to discuss with you further. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're, yes ma'am, oh, I'm sorry, y'all go ahead. Uh, Alderwoman Shabazz, then Alderwoman Wilder Bryant.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. I want to thank the executive directors of, and I'm not gonna pronounce your agencies correctly, um, the intergovernmental.
Interagency Council on Homelessness.
Yes, and the other, uh, agency.
Savannah Homeless Authority.
Yeah. Thank you so much, ladies, for the awesome work that you do every day. This hard work that you all do every day. I want to also thank, uh, my council colleagues who have put in the time for years, Alderman Purty, Alderwoman Wilder Bryant. Thank you all so much for taking the extra time out of your lives to, to, to go in and do the work, um, to bring ordinances like this, uh, in front of us so that we can, uh, better serve our citizens, um, in, in, in the city of Savannah. So I just, I just wanted to make that comment to thank all of you for your work and, and bringing, uh, this, um, forward to us so that, uh, we can have better tools to help you all do your work, help our, um, persons who, uh, represent us on, on your, on the boards of the Homeless Authority. Thank y'all. I tell you, it's something else when you, you on these boards and you, you got all this other work and you got that work on you too. So I, I, I know the road and, and the frame of how that looks. So thank you all, uh, so much for your service. I just want to mention that, uh, since, um, uh, the encampment from downtown on President Street, um, had to, to, to move, uh, that even places like, and I've gotta say this because my constituents are calling, um, off of DeRin Avenue, uh, between White Bluff and, and Montgomery Street, there is just, um, just, uh, stuff is happening over there, not with folks who are trying to do the right thing, but those who are, who are, are just vandalizing, um, people's, um, property, um, and just trashing up their properties. This is what we're talking about. So I just wanna thank y'all so much for, for your work.
Thank you. It's criminal behavior and should be addressed without an ordinance, so.
Yeah.
Uh, Alderwoman Wilder Bryant, and then ladies and gentlemen, we need to move on.
Okay. Uh, Mister Mayor, our constitution says that.
Uh, pull, pull your microphone, please.
I, I just wanna read this because I wanna make sure that I get this all. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal and endowed with certain unalienable rights, and that among these rights are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Now, if we really wanna do something about homelessness in Savannah, I happen to serve on the Homeless, uh, Authority Board. Got kinda, uh, saddened by the things that was going on there. But, uh, from 2002 to 2019, the Homelessness Center has said that the increase in ordinances against the homelessness has risen by 92%. And most of the people who are opposing this, they live downtown, and it's affecting them quite naturally. We need to do something about that. But we need to understand that I have been working with homelessness, starting out with the City of Atlanta with Maynard Jackson as a technical assistant here in Savannah at D FAX. Um, I ran a, uh, a home health agency. I worked with the, um, E O A with John Finney. And what I learned from Mister Finney, when we do these ordinances and we say these things that we can control, we have to come up with solutions. And in the mighty third district, because of the same situation, we're gonna be able to house 120 homeless people. On President Street, when they were burnt out, not only do we have a homelessness crisis, we have a mental health crisis. And so when I was asking for food for dogs and cats, people looked at me like I was crazy because they didn't understand the, uh, the ramifications of that. They live out in the weather. The dogs and the cats keep rats and rodents away, something that none of you who are opposing this, are supporting this, have ever been able to, to live or imagine it. So we are criminalizing that. And I want y'all to know, when we go to Washington, D.C., and we go to Atlanta, I bet y'all won't tell Kemp to do something about all those people that are housed around his place. Every last one of you, every last one of you are saying that it's gonna change the quality of your life without even thinking or caring about the quality of life for people who have less than, who don't have the mental capacity to do all the things to keep a job. And what happens is, we're overtaxing the police department, who already are dealing with this as best we can. We have over 32 camps, last count, right? And so they're all over everywhere. We can never eradicate homelessness or crime, but we can do what we need to do. And doing this and supporting things that take people's property, the only property that they have, that includes their personal items, like their, their identifications, that's horrible. So they are already dealing with something in the negative. So they have to go to these agencies who are short-staffed, who are working to do just exactly what we said we're gonna do. And we sit here and make these decisions that changes the quality of life that people who have nothing, nothing. And so when you say this ordinance is gonna support and change, the only thing that's gonna change is that we're still not offering solutions. If we wanna do something, and most of you people on this right here, you have businesses. The city led that charge by offering at least a $15 an hour rate. Many of you don't pay your people that, and that's a fact. So if you wanna do something, how about y'all raise the standards in living and raise the, uh, the hourly wage so that we can do something? So these people will have a place to live. Katrina Bostic in the third district, and I don't know why the other districts, she has embraced, we're getting people, women, single women, out of the hotels so they can live in these houses for two years, so they can get their lives together, so they can get educated, so they can take care of their families and take their families together. This council, we vote against the Salvation Army having a place that puts the whole entire family together. And so we sit here and say that this is not, this is not gonna be a negative thing towards homelessness. It is. Lose your job and see what happens to you, and see how much compassion that other people are willing to give you, to understand that all the things that we do, all the tools that we use to make this life better, we do it for all, and all means all. And homeless people, they buy stuff, they pay taxes, and so we're never gonna get rid of it. We have to devise a better plan, and a better plan to criminalize it. Well, I don't care how, the semantics, the words you use, this is criminalizing. Y'all are damaging the pursuit of their happiness. And so when we were on President Street, we had all of these integral parts moving. A lot of them, we offered them, you know, the housing that we could to clean up. They didn't want it. They have mental health issues. Let's do something about, uh, entertaining what we really can do to change the dynamics and the engagement of people that live in our community. Stop by increasing your hourly wages so that you can keep good people and that it could work. And there are a lot of people that I know, they had jobs, but they never can get those apartments because of, they, they had, we're supposed to ban it, but we haven't. So when they go look for apartments, they have to, they have to deal with slum lords who are not going to take care of mold and mildew and all the things that you can get because your credit has not been messed up, because you have a criminal record, and everybody knows, I did law enforcement. And when you give a person a record, it makes it harder for them to get housing at any rate. So yes, let's do something about it, but let's not criminalize it, and let's not make it illegal to lay up under the stars into rest in areas that y'all call home. And that's why I call them ruthless, because that's their home. Let's do better, and let's protect everybody in this city and not the people that you don't wanna see. Because we have to look up here, and we have to make decisions about crime. And if anybody asks the sheriff, is he willing to, to, because there are gonna be some arrests because that's what you want. And the people who stand in front of us are the people who have that luxury to stand in front of us and tell us what they want. But a lot of times, the people who need to be in front of us aren't able to do that. And they're not able to give a real-life experience of what they are going through. Housing, the criminal, we, we've had women that were raped. And so that's why they're in the public, because they, they wanna be safe. You're safe. You can call and say 911 or 311, you want something, because you want those same benefits when we say good government. So good government for me is to, do this ordinance, but have something in place that's not gonna vilify and criminalize people who are just trying to eck out a living and survive. I thank you for your time, uh, I thank you for your energy, but, uh, in D.C., where all these laws are made, there are people wrapped around and homeless. So Savannah is no different than anybody else. Where you live, I listened to them. Where you live should not be, uh, a, a part of something because somebody don't wanna see you. So next it'll be, I don't wanna see you because you're gay. I don't wanna see you because you're old. I don't wanna see you because you don't look like me. We gotta do better. We gotta do better, and we gotta support humanity. And right now, we're not supporting humanity. We're supporting, uh, people who don't want to be able to visualize and see people that they think that are not worthy to live in the same space, to eat in the same restaurants. It's wrong. I don't care how you look at it. In my 45 years of working with people with less than, if you wanna do something, you can't continue to write these ordinance and not have a solution. And all the letters that are support, not one of them said what we could do. They just told us what they wanted us to do. So I remain an advocate for homelessness and all of the things in our community that say we support everybody and not different sectors that we find, uh, displeasing to see. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, let's move on. I can, I reserve my comments to, to, to later. Again, I had not seen them until, um, recently, but anyway, thank you all. Uh, I, the purchasing items, items number 20 through 30.
Mister Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion.
I pulled 30, items 20 to 29.
I'd like to make a motion for the approval of items on the purchasing. Items number 20 through 29. And, and there's a, Alderwoman Lanier, she wanted to pull.
Uh, mine is 27 and 30. No, I'm sorry, 27.
All right, 27.
I'm gonna let 30 go.
All right, item 27 and 30, so, uh, motion would be for items number 20 through 26, 28, and 29.
Yes, sir, that's the motion.
There, second.
So moved in second.
Probably moved in second that we approve item number 20, authorized city manager execute a contract for plant Riverside public garage wayfinding with Moseller, uh, D V A founders, maintenance and restoration in amount not to exceed $71,835. Item number 21, authorized city manager execute a contract for carrier HVAC equipment with Mingledorf's Local in amount not to exceed $100,000. 22, authorized city manager execute a contract for motor data terminals from Law and Order Technology in an amount not to exceed $585,000. Item number 23, authorized city manager execute a contract for six wood chippers and one stump grinder from Bandit Industries, uh, Care of Mason Tractor Company in amount of $402,866. Item number 24, authorized city manager execute a contract for Microsize Enterprise Software with Insight Public Sector Incorporated in the amount of not to exceed $1,515,000. Item number 25, authorized city manager execute a contract to procure from the Savannah Police Department's annual ammunition from Gulf Street Distributors in amount not to exceed $13900, sorry, $130,951. Item number 26, authorized city manager execute a contract, uh, for a one compact truck loader from, a track loader from Bobcap Savannah in amount of $60,316. Item number 28, authorized city manager execute a contract for a single vent containment vessel from Herd's Custom Machinery in the amount of $79,199. And item number 29, authorized city manager execute a contract modification number two for Thomas Gamble Building renovation design with Greenline Architecture, local in amount of $274,600. You've heard the motion, all the favors, Kate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item number 27, authorized city manager execute a contract for foresight fountain restoration and conservation with Landmark Preservation LLC Local in amount not to exceed $650,000. These services will be used by the Park and Tree Department to provide restoration services to include disassembly, striping, stripping, recasting, repair and reassembly of the fountain, masonry repair of the basin, repair of the pump house building, repair of the electrical systems, and replumbing. Alderwoman Lanier.
Thank you, sir. I, I wanted to pause here because we all have noticed in the media, this has been, uh, a highlight lately about refurbishing the, the fountain. This is one of our, if not the, most outstanding asset that we have here in the city. And the reason it's so beautiful and it graced postcards and movies is because we make this type of investment in it. And, uh, we talked earlier in the workshop about investing in our assets. So the point I wanted to point out was that when we take care of our assets, our assets take care of us. So I want to move to authorize the city manager to execute a contract for foresight fountain restoration and conservation with the Landmark Preservation LLC Local.
Second.
Uh, let me just add, again, there's no right time to do this. It needs to be done. Um, and the fact of the matter is, if we don't do it proactively and the fountain breaks, we're blamed for that. Why didn't you fix it when you had the chance? So we're hoping by August the 30th, I believe, uh, it will be reassembled. We expect to have it back. I believe August the 30th was the date that was given, ish.
The estimated completion date is August 31st.
31st, okay.
Gives us that extra day.
Well, I'm hoping for an extra day. Um, but we have cleared the calendar for the rest of the year, uh, for public events there. Um, but we're hoping to have it back way before that, so. Um, and really, our maximum, our best times, actually, are fall and spring. Not, it's not the summer, a little too hot.
Yeah, I wanted to also add, Mister Mayor, that, uh, there's only a, a certain amount of people on the east coast that are able to, uh, work on our type of fountains. The same thing as the statue that's at the corner of Bull and, and Park Avenue that was, uh, that was hit early in the year. So that had to be taken down and, uh, recast it. And we only have a couple of people, like I say, on the east coast that's able to do it. So I appreciate you, Mister Mayor, and also Mister City Manager and staff, because I know we always talked about demolition by neglect, but I'm, I'm glad that we got ahead of it, and we're going to do everything to do the restoration as we do with all the programming in the park.
And get it done, get our baby back to us soon. All right, all the favors, Nikkie by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item number 30, authorized city manager execute contract modification number two for the arena surface lot with APAC Atlantic Incorporated Local in the amount of $8 million. This contract will cover soil contamination quantities anticipated to be needed for the completion of remediation of the site and repaving of the lot and Cohen Road multimodal infrastructure. The primary cause for cost overruns to date was determined The primary cause for cost overruns to date was determined to be the excavation and hauling of soil based on visual cues rather than iterative sampling, iterative. Okay. Alderman Palumbo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to thank Team Savannah and our colleagues on the council for voting to workshop this today where we gained a deeper understanding of the cost overruns. My remarks are this. $8 million more for a parking lot. We might as well pave paradise and put up a, you get the idea. When I walk through our neighborhoods, people don't stop me to ask for more parking. It did not appear in our strategic plan as any of the priority items that were laid before us. They ask for safer streets, affordable housing, and flood protection, and they ask us to be good stewards of their dollars. But we got to talk about what's really going on. Agenda today is asking for an additional $8 million, but we note that even later in the agenda, it also asks us to authorize $11 million. So I guess we're looking at a total of $23 million total for a project that was originally estimated at $7.5 million for a surface parking lot. To me, that's not a cost overrun, it is fiscal malpractice. They've thrown the mobility crowd a bone with a multimodal component, which I appreciate, but that is not exclusive to a parking lot. We can build a sidewalk, we can build a bike lane without doing a parking lot. But what's troubling to me is that they failed to provide counsel with actual designs and explain how they're going to navigate a floodplain, a contaminated site, and a railroad crossing for this new street. Those details do matter, and I want to make sure that we're not back here again asking for more money for an expanded project at a more difficult site. All of this is for a site that cost us $14 million last week, it's $8 million this week, and now it adds an additional street into the project. Most remarkably, staff recommends utilizing the same contractors for a third time, that even in the agenda as it was read, notably did not remediate the site correctly, I guess up until now. That's why the cost has ballooned to triple the original estimate. So what we can do today, and I really do appreciate that finally we do have options, it's not a binary choice of up or down, down gets sued and up just a parking lot, there is one other. And the big win here is that we can plant the flag and say, we cleaned up the site, we did our best, and we preserved open space in an area that is increasingly losing it. I think that we can achieve this without paving it over. We avoid creating a heat island, we avoid the effect of a treeless surface site, we avoid dumping, dumping massive amounts of impervious surface into a floodplain adjacent to a drainage canal, and we preserve a large piece of open space right in the heart of our city where we're quickly running out of that opportunity. Our constituents didn't send us here to spend their money on asphalt, they sent us here to build a better future, one house, one sidewalk at a time. Colleagues, I urge you to please consider utilizing these funds to clean up and remediate the site. Let's cap it off and let's live on to fight another day. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. I think this deserves a response from you. I think you adequately addressed it, but since it's a different meeting, I'll go ahead and let you respond.
Certainly. So a little note and correction about the numbers. So two weeks ago, we asked for a budget amendment totaling $14 million.
A transfer, correct? It was a transfer of 14.
It's a budget amendment transferring $14 million from capital contingency and from the parking fund. Today, I'm asking for the transfer of $11 million. The contract modification to APAC, which is one of our contractors, is the $8 million cost. As we went over in the workshop today, the estimated cost to complete with the full parking lot, sorry, let me just get to my budget numbers. The additional cost is $9,650,000. The $1.35 million is an added contingency that we're asking for, for budgetary purposes. But that 9.65 million includes an additional $8 million to APAC, who is our construction contractor, $90,000 to our expert environmental remediation, legal, and project management team, not to exceed $400,000 for the TerraCon GeoTrak, Geotechnical Services, and $1.150 million for the remaining transportation and disposal to the waste management site in Alabama. Those are the, those are the full costs. Did provide counsel with three actions that they could take. Thought action one was not feasible, meaning do nothing. Action two would be the path that Alderman Palumbo is recommending, which is to remediate the site, meet our environmental obligations, meet our legal obligations, but instead of capping with a parking lot, capping with clay and then vegetation over that.
It can't be used.
According to our environmental legal experts, and I'll just quote them, EPA will likely not approve use as a public park with open access, would have to remain fenced with no public access. That cost is $7.64 million to complete the project. That way, to complete the project and cap the site with asphalt parking lot is $9.650 million, so about $2 million over that. What we also went over in the workshop was the calculations for the return on investment as this is an enterprise activity related to the parking fund, or at least half the site is now, could be the full site. With action two, which is the vegetated cap, the estimated total revenue from the parking lot that's already there at that point would be $19.7 million over 25 years. The total expenses for that recommendation is $47.9 million, leaving a projected deficit of 28, a little over $28 million for that project. For action three, which is to cap the north side with a parking lot and to create revenue on that lot, the total revenue doubles there because you're doubling the size of the lot. And we did talk a little bit about the supply demand that we knew existed there. That revenue turns to $39 million, which leaves a deficit of $11 million. I think the key financial consideration as well in those two recommendations is that in recommendation, or the recommendation where you're putting a vegetated cap, the parking lot enterprise there never becomes cash positive. The annual expenses for the upkeep and maintenance, not only of the parking lot side, but also for the vegetated cap, outpaces any revenue you bring into the site with the parking revenue, whereas capping the site, as has been approved by EPA and EPD, with a parking lot, you become cash positive within a year or two, which is normal for our parking enterprises. And that means that our revenues on that, on that site outpace our annual expenses. So those are really the, if you're looking for a financial consideration there, that's the financial consideration. Both options would, I think, satisfy our legal obligations as well as our environmental obligations.
All right, but item number 30, this is eight, this is $8 million to deal with the soil contamination. That's what this item is dealing with right now, correct?
This would, this would deal, well, this deals with, this is my recommended proposal. This deals with remediating the soil and capping that soil with asphalt and then laying a parking lot, striping a parking lot over that for revenue. The, I've, the, you know, if, if directed, we can move forward with cap and soil. Not my recommendation because of the stark financial differences in the ROI over 25 years on the property.
Thank you. I'm moving that we approve the city manager's contract modification for Arena Surface Lot with APAC Atlantic Incorporated in the amount of $8 million.
Substitute motion.
It's been probably moved in second and all in favor.
Substitute motion came in.
Go ahead, yes, ma'am. I did have a second, all right?
Second.
Okay, go ahead.
No, it didn't.
You did have a second.
I seconded your motion.
No, no, no.
Did you lock the timing of my substitute that came in before?
No, no, I thought you said second.
No substitute.
No, she said, no, that's fine. I acknowledged the second, now I'm going to Alderwoman Lanier for her substitute, well, or subsequent motion.
Yes, I would like to present a substitute motion whereby we go with option two of the vegetative cap.
Second.
Then probably moved in second, that, and that will be the motion we take first, that option number two is the vegetative cap, all in favor, Niket by saying aye.
Aye.
Raise your hands, please. Opposed, motion fails. Going to my original motion, all in favor, Niket by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, opposed.
Opposed.
Motion passes six to three. Thank you very much. Moving on.
Mr. Mayor?
For, yes, ma'am.
I just want to say one thing.
Alderwoman.
Yes, sir. I just want to say one thing. I am agreement that we are fiduciary members, and in this summary, it says the primary cost of overruns to date was determined to be the excavation and hauling of soil based upon visual cues rather than iterative sampling. I find that very alarming. We have to do better because that is our money. When we said we do, did our due diligence, I thought that we took samples. I'm still worried about the aquifer and how we do that, but passing this, I appreciate that.
I think that's what the city manager, again, acknowledging the length and breadth of this project.
I think there are two levels of sampling. The whole site was delineated in, it's really kind of, you know, there's, there's, there's one approach which says you sample less and aggregate that, and you'll probably end up being able to haul off less soil. And there's another process that says, well, you're going to delineate, you're going to sample more and probably find more contaminant and then haul it off. The, and then, and then, so you, we did the full delineation, and then there's a process where you sample the, what you pull up and whether or not that comes out. And there was a time where the contractors, you're absolutely right, we, where they were not doing the sampling, they were hauling it off based on the site and the smell and the color of the soil and relying on prior testing versus testing that sampling again. So we did haul off more soil and more contaminated soil than perhaps we would have needed to under regulations.
Yes, sir. As a point of reference, I just wanted to remind this council that we sat, some of the people who sat here now, sat here four years ago when the cost ran because of the pandemic, and nobody fuss about that. Because of the prices that drove there, we had to always increase what was needed for those contractors. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item number 39 through 43. Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for the approval of items number 39 through 43, as is written on our agenda.
Second.
And probably moved in seconded that we approve item number 39, Renew the Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act Subrecipient Award in Mid Door for $220,000 to support the one-stop delivery system. Approve the, approve the renewal of Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act Subrecipient Award with Eckerd Connects Paxton up to $893,223 for career case management and training services. Item number 41, approve the, renew the Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act Subrecipient Awards to Ross IES Incorporated Eckerd Connects totaling up to $1,333,383. 42 is approval of the First Amendment to the 2020 sewer service agreement with Bryan County to provide necessary updates. Item number 43, approval of memorandum of agreement with Mercy University Making Campus for provision of critical workforce shelter space. You've heard the motion, all in favor, Niket by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item number 44 through 46.
Pull 45, please.
All right, pull 45, items number 44 and 46.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I authorize the city to declare.
Your motion is to authorize.
Yes, 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 I'm sorry. I'm just full right now, I appreciate it. I make a motion to authorize the city manager to declare surplus and available for sale the adjoining property owner a 0.123 acre of Brazil Street right away, sir.
And item number 46?
I authorize the city manager to declare.
Move to authorize.
No, no, yeah, authorize.
Move to authorize.
No, no, I'm just kidding now, I'm sorry. You got to have some sense of humor up in here, it's getting real, ooh, Jesus. I make a motion, I make an e-motion and a motion for the, to the city manager to declare surplus available for sales, Zero Ambro Street.
Second. Probably moved in seconded that we authorize city manager to declare surplus available for sale to the adjoining owner a .123 acre Brazil Street right away, and authorize city manager to declare surplus available for sale, Zero Ambro Street. You've heard the motion, all in favor, Niket by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item number 45, authorized city manager execute a development agreement with Hutchison Island Apartments LLC, Alderwoman Lanier.
Yes, thank you. Mr. City Manager, I became aware of this on Friday when the agenda came out, and I've read just what, your report came in on Tuesday evening and what's included right here. I've had a couple of instances since I've been sitting on council of residents on Hutchison Island reaching out for me to advocate on their behalf in terms of some drainage issues and fire apparatus issues and that kind of thing, and I was able to deal with them. But I haven't heard anything from this petitioner to be able to, to, to get a good understanding other than what I've read here. And you know, I'm continuing to advocate, where are we with the inclusionary zoning? Because we're missing so many opportunities to have affordable housing with all of the apartments that we are approving.
I met with the housing team earlier this week, and one of the major items was our progress towards inclusionary zoning proposal. Right now, the proposal is looking at, instead of certain geographical areas, looking at the entire geographical area of the city and using kind of established algorithms, you know, based on the number of units, the price of the property, the price of construction, et cetera, et cetera, to determine the number of units that any, this project would have. I think we're about three or four months out from having a presentation to council about where we are with inclusionary zoning. This particular item is a, is a known expense, was not in the 2025 CIP. However, we were approached for a public-private partnership in which the developer wanted to pay for parts of these drainage systems, and with that offer, we felt it prudent to move up our, our planned project there and to take advantage of the shared cost.
That's, that's good, and I know it's not a legal requirement, but I'm sure most times when developers come, maybe they might want to know who the older person is of that area, have a conversation with them. I'm just at the point right now where being overlooked on all of the activities that's going on in the first district is not going to be acceptable. I might need to postpone this till I can find out some more about that. So that's what I'm going to do here today. I need to, is it postponed, mark, or I need to continue this?
Mr. Manager, one moment. Mr. Manager, is this time sensitive?
Well, I mean, I'm sure it's time sensitive for the folks.
I don't think it's a requirement that it reach out.
It's a stormwater and drainage problem.
It's not, but they could have a problem like this if they don't.
I understand the request, Alderwoman, about outreach on issues. We normally agendize small works, small development agreements, surplus property sales. If, if, if you want to know about these instances beforehand, certainly try to endeavor them. You know, I, they kind of, you know, they're presented to me fairly quickly as well, and I vet them. For this particular project, this is a planned drainage project. It's a, just like we're doing all across the city, the property owner wants to share in the cost and in the cost, and, and we thought it would be prudent to, to take advantage of that cost sharing, so that's why we, we brought it to council today. I'm not familiar with what the urgency is, though I would imagine that, you know, the property owner has some urgency there. Happy to make a connection with you and, and the petitioner and our points of contact there.
Well, let me, let me say this, because I, I don't want to be difficult, but I demand that I'm going to be respected in this position. So I'm not going to stop this, but they're going to have to come back before us again with some design work or whatever else, and I hope we have a conversation prior to that so I can be kept in the loop as what's going on in the first district in terms of this development. So at this point, I'm going to move to authorize the city manager to execute a development agreement with Hutchinson Island Apartments LLC.
Second.
All right, probably move to second. Mr. McCorkle, you, you represent these folks? Why, why are you excluding the Alderman? Why you ain't reach out to the Alderman?
This was a drainage project. I did not contact the Alderman, I'm happy to, when we get out of this meeting, I'm happy to talk to you afterward or, or later this week, that's fine. This was a long-going flooding problem that is going on on Grand Prize of America Avenue. The apartment complex, or apartment complex is probably 90% done. They're starting to do pre-leasing. When it rains, you can't drive down the road. The flooding's been so bad, the road is actually blocked off by the city. Our client already designed, paid for all of the engineering and design for the city's work in the city's right of way to fix the problem, and those plans have been approved for permitting, and so that cost was on the developer, and the developers agreed to pay any cost over a certain number. So all that planning work has already been done for the benefit for the city to go and do the work, and it's, it's an urgent need so that, that apartment complex can get open and people can get moved in.
All right, y'all have a conversation, okay? Probably move to second, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number 47, authorized supplemental budget appropriation of Westside Parking Lot. Mr. Manager, what is the number now?
The number is $11 million, $4.4 million from general fund capital contingency to the Westside Surface Lot, $6.6 million from the parking fund balance to the Westside Surface Lot.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to make the motion to authorize supplemental budget appropriation for the Westside Surface Lot.
Second.
Probably move to second, and all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion passes six, three. Thank you very much. And there's a settlement, number 48, Alderman Shabazz.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I move to authorize the city attorney's office to settle the claim for Janine Grant for $40,000.
Second.
Then probably move to second that we authorize the city attorney's office to settle the claim of Janice, or Guinness, Janice Grant for $40,000. You've heard the motion, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Ladies and gentlemen, that ends an agenda and hopefully the end of a long day. Want to remind everyone, tomorrow, we are excited to start the 100 Days of Summer. Big shouts out to the class of 2025. Also, Memorial Day is always a day of remembrance of those who, who gave all, so let us remember that, even in our celebrations of the summer, that folks died to make it that way. Are there any brief, brief, brief announcements? We'll start this way, we'll come all the way down. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to make sure everyone was aware that June 1st is the beginning of hurricane season, so get yourselves together. Not only myself, but the city will be putting out information to make everyone aware in the community what hurricane season, what we're going to do this year.
Thank you. On that, check, check your insurance, make sure you have enough insurance, particularly renters. Renters' insurance is relatively inexpensive, please get that, make sure you flood, it takes about 30 days for that to kick in, and make sure you don't have old food in your refrigerator, in your, in your cabinets like I did, that was four years old of canned food, so four years old of canned food. Yeah, test and generate, yes, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor, I want to announce that the third district is having a town hall meeting at the park on Pennsylvania Avenue on June the 11th. I want to thank Carlos Bates and her Keep America, I mean, Keep Savannah Beautiful. We had 70 volunteers that cleaned up Edgemeal Sack. I also want to offer a spiritual moment of silence for, in memory of John Curry. He was a staple in our community. His business was a long time in the third district. He was supporter of LB4 and is Brittany's uncle.
Yeah, and to Lisa Curry, his wife, Curry's cleaners on Durant Avenue, his services on Saturday at Allah Hope, in Allah Hope, so we remember him as well. Anybody else?
The week is Friday.
Week is Friday.
At Fox and Weeks.
Thank you.
On May the 30th through June, the second, June the 1st, the fabulous fifth district cleanup at the fairgrounds, please bring your yard waste, your tires, and your batteries. Again, May 30th through June the 1st, that's the first one. The second one would be on June the 6th through June the 8th. Bring all your items to be thrown away and dumped at the Coastal Empire. On May the 29th, 2025, at, from 6:30 to 7:30, I'm going to have a town hall meeting, Let's Talk Public Safety. It's going to be at the Tatumville Community Center on May 29th, 2025, 6:30 to 7:30, fifth district town hall meeting, Let's Talk Public Safety. And the last one is, on this coming Saturday, we are inviting everyone to please come out and be with us for an old-fashioned neighborhood come-together event at the Liberty City Community Center. It will take place from 1 to 5 p.m., and that's for 1401 Millsby Lane Boulevard in the Liberty City community. Thank you.
That's Saturday, right?
On Saturday.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Johnson. I just want to let the community know that if you see me in the street or see any of our council members, make sure that you get a card for the start of 100 Days of Summer. 100 Days of Summer. Also, I want to congratulate my son-in-law, who is being nominated for two BET Awards for Producer of the Year, Sam Hicks. Y'all look out for him on BET. Him and my daughter, my bonus daughter, getting married on Sunday, so we'll be traveling to Atlanta to celebrate with them. Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Missions. Thank you.
Where everybody go?
I mean, just go.
I'm going too. We adjourned. Thank you, Mr. Manager, you have anything? Mr. Attorney, you have anything?
I need to see y'all all in your swimsuits tomorrow, 3 p.m. Jeff and Mark.
I'll be in Atlanta. I'm in the fifth block tomorrow. I'm in.
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 I'm in.